Good morning. I'd like to call the regularly scheduled Planning Commission for, what is today, September 8th, 2016, to order. If you would, please rise for Fledgi Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the faithful with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Mr. Barnard, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, there are. Got the minutes for approval from August the 11th and 18th. And on item number two, PDMU 16-11, there's a traffic impact statement attached.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Schenk, any changes or announcements from the county?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioners, anything before we get started here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to... Where's the minutes? Okay, minutes. Not on the agenda, but Chair will entertain a motion regarding the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes at both meetings, August 11th and August 18th.
Thank you. And as noted, there was a revision to the August 11th minutes, which clarified the time certain for the, is it the Miera?
Correct.
Hearing. So that time certain is October, just for the record, October 13th at 9:30. So Chair has a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. DeLezline, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Chair votes aye, passes 6-0. All right. The next thing we have is citizen comments. So these are comments from the citizens who wish to make statements regarding any items that's not on today's agenda. I do have a speaker card from Mr. Stuart Smith. So, Mr. Smith, if you would, step up and please make your comment.
My name is Stuart Smith. Thank you for having me. I'm going to need the projector here. You may want to zoom in on what I've put down here eventually.
And, Mr. Chairman, just for the record, these are items that are not quasi-judicial. So they can't retain any development permits.
This is not a specific quasi-judicial item.
Okay, thank you.
It is a general item. I'm the one who sent you the email and the letter this week about phosphate mining, including recommending that you ask the county attorney's office to find out how you could, if you wanted to, ban the practice. I'm sure you digested all of it thoroughly and looked at all the materials. And if you haven't, I encourage you to look at them. I sent it because Mr. Rutledge indicated at your last meeting that the commission should make time to discuss some of the bigger issues regarding phosphate mining and what kind of place you want our county to be. And he was not, as I sense, the only person up there with concerns like that. So I think now is the time to get started while it's fresh in your mind. I also sent it because Mr. Clegg said a permit hearing is not the place to consider such issues. As long as there's a path to a permit and all you do is react to permit applications, mining will prevail. The horse is really out of the barn in Manatee County, but you can, if you want to, build a corral around it. So figuring out how to ban phosphate mining may sound extreme as a first step. But to focus the discussion, if you're serious about larger issues, I think it's appropriate because the first question you should ask is, does phosphate mining fit with what we want for our county? And here's what's at stake. This is a map here of Bone Valley. Everything inside this yellow line is Bone Valley. Here are the county borders, right here. Manatee is here, Hillsborough, Polk, Hardy, and then DeSoto. Mosaic wants to mine everything it can within that yellow line, and a lot of it is in eastern Manatee County. Most of southwestern Polk County is already mined. New mines are in pink, yellow, turquoise, and orange, and some of them are in Manatee County. There are also lands owned by Mosaic adjacent to this pink part down in southern Manatee County, which will be mined. It'll come before you eventually. And that's more property than all the other mines in the county already. So all of east Manatee County really is susceptible. If you don't want more mining, you have to ban it. If you choose to regulate it, you'll have it. If you do want phosphate mining, though, as a result of any deliberations you might do, your next question should be, do our current regulations protect our interests and do they compensate us adequately for the long-term impacts that we're going to allow? Either way, you're talking about potentially changes to the comprehensive plan, the land development code, the phosphate mining ordinances, and zoning. And you'll probably need lots of advice from workshops, consultation with staff, your attorneys, maybe even Polk County, Polk County Property Appraiser. He's got a great map you might want to look at. And objective experts, and by that I mean anybody who doesn't work for Mosaic. Why am I bringing this to you? You're the most influential Citizens Advisory Committee in the county. I figure the Planning Commission is the best place for a discussion of this type about the long-range future of the county. And I think a carefully considered recommendation from you would mean a lot more to the County Commission than three minutes from me or anybody else. So whether it's banning the practice or taking some other approach, I'm here to urge you to get the ball rolling today.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Rutledge.
Are we able to ask questions of the public comment?
I'll defer to the county attorney's office.
Only if it's not pertaining to a specific project. And also, you should keep in mind, we do have phosphate mining ordinance that was updated in not-too-distant past. I'm told it's one of the strongest ordinances in the state. I think you'd be better off, if you want to have a workshop on phosphate mining, have the staff here to present everything and have... This isn't coming at that time because there is a penny application with Mosaic right now.
How about if I make a comment that's not related to his statements?
Okay.
Could I do that?
Sure.
I'm new at this, so forgive me. First of all, I want to say I very much appreciate you coming forward like this. I was just filling out my application to kind of renew, you know, being on the board again. And it's very frustrating in some ways. And I struggle because our goals are very specific. And really, we need someone like you to come forward and bring this discussion forward. In other words, somebody to say, hey, we want to talk about this so that we can have a planning meeting, review this. Because, you know, just writing my thing, I love living in Manatee County. You know, I've lived in a lot of places. And I just, it's fantastic. And so I struggle desperately on some of the things we get presented. And we're not called to ask the questions you asked us today. So I very much appreciate that you've done it. I'm thankful that you're knowledgeable enough about how the government works to make an appropriate request. And I'd like to ask the board to consider what action we might take to forward the thinking of the public request.
Mr. Barnard.
I think at this point in time, it's probably better that we consider a workshop between the Planning Commission and possibly the Board of County Commissioners on this subject. But I think it would be appropriate to give the county attorney and the Building and Development Services staff an opportunity to possibly put something together.
Thank you. And this action, would it come through just a simple request of staff or does it need to be made in the form of a motion?
A motion, please.
Okay. So...
So moved?
So moved, okay. Mr. Rutledge, could you please clarify what we're asking? We're asking for a workshop, but combined...
I would like to ask county staff to organize a appropriate meeting to review the concerns raised by the Mr. Smith.
Well, I think if staff to review concerns, you should say to review what current regulations are and whether anything needs to be updated on the comprehensive plan later from a code in phosphate mining.
And you were asking also for a workshop?
Yeah, I think if that's the appropriate approach, yes, ma'am. I mean, I'm not trying to stay within the guidelines of what we have, but I think some more discussion about this in a venue that's not related to a permit, that's not something specific, I think would be valuable for me.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Deliberation, Mr... I don't know. We have a motion on the floor. I don't know if it's...
Okay.
So any additional deliberation or discussion?
I'll tell you all that for the clerk's office. Could you clearly state what the motion is for the record?
No. Could you help me?
I'd be happy to. I think we should take this opportunity to workshop the mining regulations, educating both boards on the mining regulations as much as discussing the merits of that ordinance.
So the motion would be to have or conduct a joint workshop with the Planning Commission and the County Commission to dialogue regarding the mining ordinance?
Phosphate mining.
Phosphate mining. Phosphate mining. It's not the coal mining. We're good with that.
Phosphate mining.
Wrong state.
Tell you from Pennsylvania, right?
So we have a motion and a second. Mr. Bauer, do you agree with that clarification?
Hundred percent, yeah.
Okay, all right. Chair will call the matter to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Chair also votes aye, so the recommendation for a workshop passes 6-0. In addition, we still are open for public comment. So is there anybody else who wishes to come forward and speak on any matter that's not on the regular agenda? Okay, seeing nobody come forward, we're going to move to the next section, and that is establishing the rules of procedures. So if you have any intention to speak on the record today, if you would, please rise and be sworn in.
Do you swear affirm that the factual statements and factual representations which you're about to present to this board will be truthful and accurate? Thank you.
For clarification, Mr. Barnard, are items one and two on consent? Are they regular?
Items one or two are presentations upon request.
So, okay, so they're on consent. So, Mr. Barnard, could you please read item number one into the record, please?
Item one, PDMU 06-80 GR2 Lakewood Ranch Commerce Park LLC, Lakewood Ranch Commerce Park. Case planner is Margaret Tousing. Revised general development plan and stipulations as previously approved by ordinance PDMU 06-80 GR to allow an additional 737,000 square feet of industrial uses within the Lakewood Ranch Commerce Park area designated for industrial development, revising stipulations to conform to current stipulation standards, approving a schedule of uses as voluntary proffered by the applicant and attached as Exhibit B. Lakewood Ranch Commerce Park is located south of State Route 64, east on the east and west sides of Lakewood Ranch Boulevard, and north and south of Gatewood Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Barnard. And the clerk's office clarified, these are not consent items. They're just simply presentation upon request. So we've heard the item read into the record. I guess the question is then, open for discussion, is there anybody who, on the commission, who wishes to hear any additional presentation on this item?
I'd like to have a brief summary on the Lakewood Ranch. Just kind of get it up to date. Looks like there are several things that have happened on this project since its beginning, just to run through of where it started and where we're at now.
All right. And then also for the record, are there, have there been any ex parte communications regarding this matter? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to introduction by staff.
Thank you and good morning. Margaret Tousing with Building and Development Services, and I have been sworn. I just want to say one thing. In your recommended motion, please notice, I just noticed that the PDMU number was wrong. It says 0630. It should be 0680. So when you make the motion, if you would, please correct that. And I'll make sure it's corrected before it goes to the board. Yeah, the history of the project, Dorinda Marvin is here representing Lakewood Ranch, and she could probably go through it. It has gone through a lot of rezonings and things, but the development that is currently out there has been stable for quite some time, and they're amending this to allow an additional 737,000 square feet of industrial, which now is allowed to be done because there is no threshold requirement in the DRI any longer. So, but Ms. Marvin is here, if, and she can discuss the project in more detail.
Thank you. Morning, Ms. Marvin. If you would, please state your name and that you have been sworn.
Thank you, Margaret. For the record, Dorinda Marvin. I'm a planner with Grimes, Goble, Grimes, Hawkins, Gladfelter, and Galvano, and have been sworn. I'm here representing Lakewood Ranch Commerce Park LLC. Also here with me today is Mr. Richard Bedford, Vice President of Planning for Schrader Manatee Ranch. Mr. Bauer, the history of this project actually goes back to the year 2000. And this was a standalone project, not related to any of the other Lakewood Ranch DRIs. At the time it was rezoned and approved, it was granted an approval for almost 2.5 million square feet of mixed use. There was a condition on that approval that said future development would have to comply with the DRI statutes and the thresholds. And over time, those laws have changed. There was an approval in, I think, 2008, or 2007, 2008, when the project came back. And at that time, what Schrader Manatee decided to do was reduce those entitlements to take away that question so that there was not a question of going through any state or regional process, reduce that project down to the numbers that we currently have. And the unfortunate circumstance of that is that we now have 180 acres remaining on the project that have not been built upon with about 200,000 square feet left to build. So when we looked at that, we said, let's make a plan to go forward so that we can utilize the land that's left. And we needed sufficient entitlement. When we looked into the history of the thresholds, in 2011, the legislature removed the threshold for industrial development. That was done statewide to encourage business opportunities in the state of Florida. With that requirement no longer there, we were able to come in and ask for additional entitlements in the industrial category without affecting that. There's not a question of whether or not we have to go through that process. The total on this project will now be 1,358,000, which is still less than the 2.5 million that was originally approved. You know, this is a site that since 2000, this area has seen a lot of development. We are adjacent to the Lena Road landfill, providing a transition from that landfill to the remaining residential development that occurs in Lakewood Ranch. Really, this location on Lakewood Ranch Boulevard, which right now extends from Sarasota County to the Manatee River, will eventually cross the Manatee River. And that north-south thoroughfare is traversed by State Route 64, by 44th Avenue, State Route 70, and University Parkway. So for a light industrial user, for businesses that operate as light industrial or distribution uses, you know, from a transportation standpoint, it's really an ideal setting. So in order to facilitate the development of that remaining 180 acres, we are here today to ask for your approval of the additional 737,000 square feet.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? Mr. Bauer.
Forgive me because I just don't know. I don't see a traffic impact statement on this. Is it because where we're at, is that too early to be seeing that? Is that why I don't see it?
That's correct. This is a general development plan. The development entitlements that exist today have a CLOS certificate. The additional square footage that we are requesting today is prohibited by your code from requesting that information, or from that certificate, sorry. So as development proceeds to the final site plan stage, individual users will come in. And there is a pending application for a user. They will receive their own CLOS certificate.
So you say individual user. So I'm looking at the map, okay? Of some built out, some not. So let's just say an individual... So all this land that's not developed yet, ideally, it will be developed in some capacity for industrial purposes.
That's correct.
And each individual project is a standalone project?
That's correct. And that is the way it has to work under the rules that we have today. I can tell you, there is a pending application for a 500,000-square-foot light industrial user that is undergoing final site plan review with a traffic analysis to receive their concurrency approval.
So when you say it has to be like that, why does it have... So here's my thought, okay? And I think, quite honestly, the way the rules are set up, it's very smart. But because of the concurrency laws, as each individual comes in for an application to build on this land, individually, they might not have a traffic impact. As a whole, I think it'd be, you know, common sense to suggest that if all this area is built, there's going to be a traffic impact. But individually, like we have seen time and time again, that is not the case. So why must it be an individual scenario?
Well, unfortunately, this is a general development plan. So we are setting out entitlements on the land. And the way that the Manatee County rules are written in the land development code, we are not permitted to even seek concurrency approval. So at the next stage, whether that's a preliminary or a final, the developer of that project must seek concurrency approval.
Mr. Bauer, any additional question? See, Mr. Rutledge wanting to...
I'm thinking, but go ahead.
Mr. Chair, if I just may qualify this for a minute, general development plans do not have any expiration dates. So that's why we don't do a traffic study. We don't want it in effect forever, against typical currency forever. Concurrent has to have specific timeframes when it's good for a certain number of years or a certain period, then expires.
Right, so...
So I think that was the logic why GDPs do not have concurrency studies.
Right. So with regard to the process, a CLOS is a reservation of capacity. It could be transportation capacity. So GDP general development plan, which is the lowest level of information necessary for entitlement, there's not enough information there to actually reserve any capacity. And as Ms. Schenk said, it reserves, it does not expire. So if you tied a CLOS to a GDP, you would have capacity reserved in perpetuity for something that may never be built. So that's, I think, the general idea.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I might, we would also over-reserve because you very often see a large number. We've done necessarily land planning. We've not laid out buildings and roads and things internal to a project when we're looking at a general development plan. We might have a much higher number. We also have a mixture of uses, and we don't know exactly what those uses might be at that stage. So as you progress through the development and you more precisely determine what your uses are, you are more able to accurately depict on that concurrency reservation. And that's not just traffic-related. That's water capacity, sewer capacity, schools, other items. And as Ms. Schenk said, once that certificate is issued, those are sort of held by a developer or a landowner. And we don't want to encourage what we call the hoarding of that capacity. And as I said, we would overestimate if we're doing it at that early planning stage.
So the uses aren't known currently. So if, say, there was a presumption, whatever the largest generator of transportation trips were presented as the potential use, you would reserve maybe two, three, four times the trips that would actually be necessary if, when the project is developed?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. What is required in the analysis is that you would study the highest generator. We often find that when we're doing comp plan amendments. We have to look at the maximum that could be allowed. And so we overestimate what could happen, and as you say, would hoard that capacity.
Okay.
But you understand my concern?
I do understand your concern, Mr. Bauer.
One additional question that came up when Mr. Bauer was asking his question. I just want to make sure the user, the specific user, even though it's an individual application, they don't operate in a vacuum. They have to analyze their impact on the current capacity of any facility, whether it's water, sewer, or roadways.
And that's right, Mr. Chairman. I am a planner. I'm not a traffic engineer.
With regard to CLOS.
Right. In terms of the analysis, Mr. Charlie Swire, they do not operate in a vacuum. They have to look at what else is on the road, if you will, what else is planned. And I'm sorry, Mr. Davis, if you might want to jump in and explain that for me, but...
And also, one of the other things I want to make sure that is understood is, that I understand, is the capacity that's reserved is also part of the analysis, is it not?
Good morning. For the record, Clark Davis, Transportation Planning Division Manager, and I have been sworn. There have been several questions asked. The first is about the TIS. You don't often see a GDP or PSP alone. You often see it accompanied by a zoning change. And when we have a zoning change, we look at the change in potential trip generation from the approved zoning to the proposed zoning. And that's what prompts the TIS. In this case, they've had the zoning in place for years. They're just amending a GDP to, in some ways, reflect what they've had in the past. This is, as you've heard, this has had a different history than a lot of developments this size. So for this particular GDP where the zoning is in place, you're not seeing a TIS. When we do a traffic study, when they come in and request a certificate of level of service at preliminary site plan or have to do it for a final site plan, we look at the trips from approved but not yet built development, so other projects that have certificates of level of service, and existing traffic. So we do account for the traffic from other development. What we don't see, and I think this might be what Mr. Bauer was asking about, is cumulative assessment of impacts. And a lot of that is, we're just getting away from it. It's been the structures and the state laws and the Development and Regional Impact Rule, where they tended to, aggregate's the wrong word because it had a very specific meaning under the DRI rule, but look at the cumulative impacts of larger developments. And we're seeing less and less of that just because of the concurrency world we live in now.
And when you say concurrency world, you mean as dictated by state statute?
Primarily the changes in state statute.
Okay. But not entirely?
You'll still see people come in with a large project and want to get all their entitlements at the PSP stage, for example. And so they will look at the cumulative impacts of their entire development. They'll come in to the county and approach them to work out their mitigation through a development agreement or something like that. So not entirely because by choice, they can come in and do it that way at times. It makes sense depending on what they're trying to accomplish.
And so your clarification, say if we had a large site like this and a bank comes in, they have to, they're responsible for their CL, their capacity. If a gas station comes in, same thing, for example. But we're not looking at the gas station in the bank and whatever else might also be there as a single item. It's an iterative process as opposed to a...
And while theoretically that could happen as a practical matter in a development like this, you'll actually see big chunks of it at a time, like Crowder Shopping Plaza came in all at once under one FSP, and we're likely to see a large industrial user on the site, that sort of thing.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bauer, any follow-up?
Not at the moment, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Rutledge, I'm sorry, did your question...
Yeah, I just wanted to say one thing. So I can remember it a long time ago when we were developing, and people would aggregate all these things. They wanted to know how much traffic this overall development would have. And what happened is they got control of those, and we used to have to go barter if we had another development. And so what I think, when I see this, I see your point of saying, hey, what is this going to mean? But the other option is if they say, this is going to mean this much, they then control that, and then some other developers have to go. I think the county retains a lot of control and says, I'm not giving you any, zero absolute commitments. I control those warrants and rights and traffic considerations. And it's kind of the opposite. It's the same question, but the answer is, we are retaining that control till we know exactly what we're getting. And I can tell you, in retail, the difference between putting, let's not use names, a gas station versus a bank, and the trip counts are hugely different. And a neighborhood will feel totally different about a convenience store versus a bank. So having that detail, from my perception, I like much better. I know it kind of feels odd now because you don't know, but they'll be back, right? I mean, so, and so that's, I see the other side of it, having been on there asking for traffic rights.
Thank you. Ms. Marvin, one clarification. The Lakewood Ranch Commerce Park has a CLOS that expires in 2018. Are any of the trips from that reservation, the capacity, is that going to be swept over to the new development? Or is the CLOS for the Commerce Park separate and apart from anything regarding the new proposed development? Or is the CLOS for the Commerce Park, uh, separate and apart from anything regarding the, uh, the new, um, proposed development?
Mr. Chairman, I'll answer it in a couple of ways. The CLOS that's associated with Lakewood Ranch, Lakewood Ranch Commerce Park came with something called a master preliminary site plan, which most folks working in Manatee County today have never heard of and haven't seen. It was something, um, many years ago that certain staff members liked to see. And this was a project that had a condition, have a master preliminary. So that master preliminary came in, showed roadways in additional detail. And that is what the CLOS was associated with. There are some remaining entitlements, and I was trying to flip to the page in the staff report to show you what those are. I know it's in my narrative, but I'm not sure they have the narrative. But there is approximately 200,000, um, square feet, and that's a mixture of office, industrial, and commercial. The additional 737,000 will not have any concurrency. It will have to come in on its own. So there are some remaining entitlements that stay under the existing CLOS. Any future of the additional we're requesting will come on a future application and have its own CLOS.
Okay.
Did I explain that?
Yes, we're not replacing the existing CLOS with the new one.
Correct, there's not an overlap.
Thank you. Any additional questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. So, um, we'll go to staff. Is there any, the additional presentation? Oh, there you are.
Uh, no, sir, unless you have any additional questions of me.
Any clarifications from staff? Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to open the, uh, public hearing to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on this matter? If you would, please, uh, come forward. Okay, we're going to close public comment. And, uh, we're going to open this up for discussion. Is there any discussion, deliberation? Mr. Bauer?
I just had a question maybe, um, for our attorney. I'm just curious. So going back to, you know, been almost three years on this planning commission, and we should see it time again, where the concurrency laws have really not helped out this county very much. So, um, I agree with the fact that we don't know what necessarily is going to be put in to these locations. So it's difficult to say right now what impacts we will be, will have. Individually, we have seen rarely that any one individual project has a traffic impact. But if you start lumping, lumping them all together, they do. So my, I guess my question is, is there a way that should development over the years in this area, in this GDP, cumulatively created traffic impact, that the county come back and say, you know, somehow you got to help pay for this growth because together you guys and this general development plan has made a traffic impact? You follow me?
Well, in this instance, it's, well, Lakewood Ranch, it was approved as a series of development regional impacts. And if any developer studied traffic intensively, it's been Lakewood Ranch.
Oh, I don't disagree.
So I wouldn't really use this one as opposed to child for amending the concurrency regulations. And they are vested with local development agreements and they approve regionally significant transportation facilities like 44th. So I might just speak generally rather than for this project.
That's fine.
They've been covered by DRI regulations, so they've overstudied their traffic by other people. The problem is with, with general development plans in other areas, you, the state statute prohibits the county from requiring any existing deficiencies to be addressed by the new project. So that takes a lot off the table in terms of improvements. And once they're vested with a certificate, we can't go back five years later and say, the traffic's worse than we thought. You've got to pay more. We can't do that either. If that answers your question. We're, we're frozen in time as to what we can justify requiring based on the traffic study they submit.
Right, but when, so going back to what you just said, it's worse than what we thought it was based off the previous traffic study. The traffic study comes from the developer, which we take as true, but if it's inaccurate of the, you follow me?
Well, we won't get into that, but staff could tell you that they have a standard methodology. They have approved in a, in a manual how to do the traffic study, such as more number crunching and it comes out of a computer model. And staff will say they feel the traffic study is accurate. But no, we can't go back after the entitlements are awarded and require the developer to do more.
So in a nutshell, unless the concurrency laws for the state change, this is the way it is.
We have limited latitude in what we can-
Yes, ma'am.
Do.
Thank you.
Mr. Bauer, for clarification, I, your question, uh, is causing a little confusion on my part. Is your question regarding, like, for every use or an aggregated use, the, the analysis? The way I understand it, and Mr. Davis can clarify, that, um, we have a, a datum, a, a reference point. That reference point is the current level of traffic, so that's where we're starting. And then each use, each application for CLOS is then added to that incrementally as opposed to all the uses being added.
Right, so let me try to explain myself a little bit better. So we have an applicant here who wants to essentially increase within their current general development plan. Correct? So collectively, you look at this huge amount of property. If it all gets built out with some sort of use, I think it's easy to say there's going to be a traffic impact, especially with how the area is growing, period. But what we have seen time and again is an application, an individual application will come in to us for approval. They'll have their traffic impact statement, and individually, they don't have an impact. And so what happens is, it's not quite built out yet and another applicant comes in. And so right next door, we just approved one, but it's not built yet. So when they do their traffic study, you know, project number two, they're not accounting for project number one and project number three until things are actually built out.
Right, I, I think that's where we can get clarification. Our, uh, Mr. Davis, are, is project number one accounted for when project number two comes in for analysis?
Even if it's not built?
Yes.
If it's approved but not yet built, meaning it's got a, it has a valid certificate of level of service compliance. We account for their traffic as part of what we call the background traffic.
Right, that, so a CLOS is as good as cars on the road with regard to the model, the analysis.
When we do the analysis, we count that traffic.
Mr. Rutledge?
And just a point of clarification, so when you, uh, have an existing operation, so let's say you build out half of this. That existing traffic that they've imputed onto the highway, or they've added to that highway, is the basis then for the next application. So they don't get to go in and say, well, those weren't counted or they're more than we expected. Those are still considered, and then the model goes on top of that, right? So it's not like they can, like, slide in and get in while, before you figure out how much traffic's there, right?
Yes, again, for approved but not yet built development. Well, it, it, the, the, um, you could have a bunch of projects come in and get rezoning at the same time. They won't have certificates of level of service compliance, but those, they have a certain level of, of entitlement. We won't include that traffic because they don't have certificates yet. So you'll reach a point where somebody's going to be the last guy in the door and get caught. But, but to the extent that they have certificates of level of service compliance, we are including their trips on the road. So it, when somebody gets their traffic study approved, we'll have a list of links and we'll have a list of trips by link that they have there. And we add those to the, the counts that we collect, sometimes adding in growth as well, depending on the data that counts. But it's, that, that background traffic is the foundation upon which the project traffic is placed. And then we compare that to the capacity of the road system to see if improvements are needed.
So, so the size of the project doesn't change the ability of somebody to come in and get more trips. Like, just because you approved 700,000 feet more, we're not saying that that opens it up to an unlimited amount of traffic because the size of the square footage. Because my, I always think of different types of uses, you know, you have a different traffic count if you have, um, Amazon opening up in there versus somebody that does more storage. And so I think that that's kind of part of the detail of who you are approving and what their use is going to be, right?
And, yeah, I believe that, um, Mr. Connolly and the applicant were discussing that earlier. That's down to the specific user. So a, a, a manufacturing facility, um, might have relatively low trips compared to a regional distribution warehouse, which sends trucks in and out all day. And so the, the two industrial users from the driving down the highway might even look similar to, uh, people going by, but have really different types of-
Velocity. And so the critical element in this discussion isn't necessarily cars on the road with regard to the, the, what we're talking about. It's actually the CLOS. That's when Manatee County presumes those cars are going to be present, that they're accounted for at that point, not when they're actually on the road.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any additional questions or clarifications? And, um, just a reminder, uh, Tom and, and Clark are both engineers. You have to be careful how you ask a question. You're going to get a specific answer.
Oh, yeah, try and teach me.
All right, are there any, uh, additional items for discussion? Okay, Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Rhodes?
I'll make a motion based on the staff report, evidence presented, comments made at the public hearing and finding the request to be consistent with the Manatee County Comprehensive Plan and the Manatee County Land Development Code as conditioned herein. I move to recommend adoption of Manatee County zoning ordinance PDMU 06-80 para G, para R2, R2, and approval of the amended general development plan with stipulations 1 through 14 as recommended by staff.
Thank you. I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. DeLuslo, a second. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, the chair will call the matter to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Chair votes aye, passes 6-0. Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to the, uh, next item on the agenda, which is number two. Mr. Barnot, could you please read that item into the record?
I will, Mr. Chair. Another presentation upon request. PDMU, item number two, PDMU 16-11, ZP, CCSS Enterprises, LOB, University ALF. The planner is Brandon Rowe. A rezone of approximately 8.5 acres on the north side of University Parkway, west of Shade Avenue, and commonly known as 2355 University Parkway, Sarasota. From A1 Suburban Ag to the PDMU Plan Development Mixed Use Zoning District and approving a preliminary site plan for a 200-bed assisted living facility and a commercial out parcel.
Thank you, Mr. Barnot. Again, this is a, uh, presentation upon request. What's the pleasure of the, of the board? Any questions or comments? Clarification required? I would just like to mention, I think it's humorous that there's a school letter associated with an ALF.
I was thinking the gun range next door was kind of curious.
Well, everybody's got to have a hobby.
A little bit of humor, Mr. Chair. In this traffic study, did they consider the oasis at University in the traffic study?
I guess that would be Mr. Davis.
And would need to look to see if they got a CLOS with that PSP or they deferred. So if you can give me a few minutes to research while you go through the rest of it.
Good answer. All right, um, so, uh, Mr. Davis is, uh, frantically, frantically searching for a-
Mr. Davis, the oasis was a preliminary site plan. Approval.
And a PSP is eligible for certificate of level of service compliance at the applicant's option. So if they requested a CLOS, we should have accounted for that traffic. But I just need to compare the, the dates of when things happen.
But otherwise, if they did not request a CLOS, that traffic would not be accounted for. So depending on who comes first is-
Right, we, we don't book the trips till the certificate's issued.
Right.
So I'm just curious, so when the applicant submits their traffic study that we read, or I read, in the traffic study, it doesn't say necessarily the, uh, CLOS of other projects nearby that they're accounting for? Or is that, you take their study and you apply it based off what you know already? That's what I'm wondering.
It can be done a couple of different ways. We may tell them what the developments are and they'll determine it. Or more often, we'll tell them, based on this, we have a concurrency database. And in that database, there's, each road segment has a number associated with it. So it's got a unique identifier. And then every time trips are added for a development for that road segment, it just gets rolled up. And so we may just give them a number, you know? This, this link of University Parkway from 301 to Shade has 570 trips on it. It might be from one, two, or 20 different developments, but we just give them a total cumulative number of trips that have been booked from other certificates of level of service, but for projects that haven't been built yet. That's, that's the main way we do that.
But as an end result of your staff recommendation, you are at least considering any certificate levels of service of adjacent projects that might actually affect the project's impact or non-impact. Is that accurate?
If I understand the question, yes. That, so for, they start by doing the trip generation for the ALF. Then would they determine which road segments they significantly impact? In this case, it would be Shade and probably the, the pieces of University on either side of that. So those will be three separate road segments. We'll look at all the certificates of level of service that have also assigned trips to those three road segments and we'll provide those numbers to the applicant for them to use in their analysis so that they account for those trips in their study.
Okay. And, um, also, I'd like to, uh, get additional clarification. The, um, just from my experiences, uh, when we do these analyses, many times, we're not limited to just roadways adjacent to the property. Mr. Davis, isn't it also correct that as these projects get larger, the influence of the traffic also increases? So you may have something like, uh, the best example is the mall. The mall, the analysis, isn't just at that intersection. It may go down to B Ridge and up to State Road 64 where you see influences of that. So it depends on the size of the project as to the area of influence with regard to the analysis.
Yes, there, there is a, a significant impact area. And at the smallest, it is what we call the first impacted thoroughfare, the first major road to which they have some sort of connection. At the largest, it can be, you know, a dozen or more different road segments. They, they weren't for concurrency purposes, but if you recall, uh, the Lake Flores analysis, for example, it studied most of Southwest County. It was an extremely large project and had thoroughfares on its periphery and running through it and, and, uh, spreading out from it that all were carrying a significant amount of project traffic.
And, uh, congratulations, the University ALF's just been associated with the traffic problems that occur in the University Town Center and Lake Flores. But, um, no, I, the, the idea is the larger the impact, the larger the analysis area. So it, um, it, I think, uh, it's helpful, you know, this discussion has been mainly regarding traffic and analysis and conditional letters of, uh, or concurrency, CLOSes. And I think it's very helpful to understand how these, uh, these things kind of fit into the whole process. Mr. Rutledge?
I had a question. I, is there a, a direction or an intention to tie into Broadway Avenue? You know, there's a lot of traffic now, you know, with the Starbucks and all the stuff that's occurred kind of on University to come off of, um, Tuttle, Tuttle there, where you can sneak back through on Broadway. Is there an intention to use the ALF, shoot straight into Oasis to connect on that?
The idea is to cross-connect all of those developments eventually. This is one of the tougher spots. There's, uh, some environmental areas that are immediately to the west of this ALF and wrapping around it to the south that will make it difficult to build a road through there. But we may be able to interconnect the, the parking areas, kind of like we've, we've, um, worked with the applicant to, to initiate with the shoot straight. And I think another commercial tenant is not even there yet, but I mean, they've started something there that should allow for some of those cross-connections. We saw a little bit of that with the oasis and the cross-connections they were providing to the local roads to the west. So it won't be the thoroughfare that Broadway was at one time, you know, a collector road that ties it all together. But we should have some interconnections that will allow people to move from one development to the other continuously without necessarily requiring them to get on University Parkway to do it.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions, comments, discussion? Okay, all right. Well, I guess, uh, Chair will open the, uh, the floor up to a motion. Mr. DeL-, I'm sorry?
Do we need public?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, we do. Thank you for keeping me- Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we do. Thank you for keeping me on task. Is there anybody in the public who wishes to come forward and speak on this item? Again, if you have a comment or question or concern, if you would, please step forward. Okay. Seeing none, we're going to close the public comment portion of the hearing. And again, chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeLezline.
Based upon staff report, evidence presented, comments made at the public hearing, and finding the request to be consistent with Manatee County Comprehensive Plan and Manatee County Land Development Code as conditioned herein, I move to recommend approval of Manatee County zoning ordinance number PDMU-16-LLZP. Approval of a preliminary site plan with stipulations A.1 through A.2, B.1 through B.2, C.1, D.1 through D.4, making a specific finding that the buildings for the assisted living facility exceeding 35 feet in height are consistent with land development code section 402.7.D.9, in that the development as stipulated is compatible with the surrounding area and will not create any external impacts that would adversely affect surrounding development. Granting special approval for a project in mixed-use feature land use category as recommended by staff.
Thank you, Mr. DeLezline. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Rhodes, second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the chair will call the matter to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Chair votes aye. Motion passes six zero. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to item number three, which is a scheduled presentation. Mr. Barnot, could you please read item number three into the record?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Number three, presentation scheduled, LDC T 16-06, ordinance 16-31, Land Development Code Amendment. Case planners, Rosina and Leiter. An ordinance amending section 402.5 of the Manatee County Land Development Code, schedule of uses for planned development districts, table 4.7, 4-7, to include outdoor storage, principal use, and recreational vehicle parks and subdivisions as permitted uses in the PDMU zoning district. An amending section 345 special approval process as required by the Manatee County Comprehensive Plan, table 3-4.
Thank you, Mr. Barnot. Again, this is a legislative issue. So again, it's a modification to code. So I'm sorry, Ms. Slider, if you could, please, your presentation.
Good morning, Rosina and Leiter, by the staff, and I have been sworn. Like the advertisement says, we are proposing two changes to the land development code. One is to include outdoor storage, principal use, and recreational vehicle parts, like allowed use with the PDMU. And the second one is to make a deletion of language that is in the special approval table that contradict other parts of the land development code. This amendment is for, to provide internal consistency with the comprehensive, with the land development code. When we were reviewing the land development code, and day by day, we found that there are only three uses that are allowed in PDC, but that are not allowed in PDMU. These three uses are outdoor advertising signs, the outdoor principal use, storage, outdoor principal use, and the recreational vehicle park, vehicle parks and subdivisions. We were trying to figure out where we excluded. We didn't find any particular reason, because all the rest of the uses that are allowed in PDC are allowed in PDMU. And the intent of PDMU is to allow the combination, the good combination of different uses. We didn't include in this amendment outdoor signs, because this is going to be subject to land development code revision with all the chapter six. And the other part of the request is to delete a language that is in the table 3-4, that says that all recreational vehicle parks have to be rezoned CRB. First, is not calling any longer CRB, is naming right now this type of use is named RVP. And this language is in contradiction with an amendment of the land development code that was made in 2014 to update all the regulations related, or part of the regulations related to mobile home and recreational vehicle in 2014. And this language says that specifically for planned development recreational vehicles has to provide criteria and regulation for the development of new recreational vehicle parks. That means if this language isn't in the table, contradict whatever was approved previously to update our development code according with the Florida statutes regulation. This is the two, the two changes, you know, is, one is to allow these two uses with the PDMU in order to provide internal consistency with the rest of the uses that are in the land development code that can be approved in PDC and can be in PDMU, like a mixed uses. And the second one is to delete only this language that says MOF to be rezoned to CRB. If you have any particular questions, I can go in more detail.
Thank you.
In addition, we are not changing any other particular regulations that are in the land development code. RV parks and outdoor storage are subject to specific use criterias, and we are not changing any specific use criteria that is applicable for these particular uses. And we are not changing any language related to the specific PDR regulations for these kind of uses. When you have PDMU, PDMU, the particular uses, if you have, for example, something that is commercial, another portion of the site in PDMU going to be residential, every portion of the site has to comply with the particular regulations that are applicable for the residential, for the PDR, and for the PDC. We are not changing any specific regulation that is applicable for these particular uses.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have a question? Just looking at table 3.1?
3.4?
3.1, special approval that was included in the package.
It's 3.4. Sorry.
Special approval as required by Manatee County? Guess that would be the first thing, is labeled as table 3.1.
Oh, it's, sorry, it's 3.4. Sorry.
Is that the wrong table?
Yeah, it's the table, but it's with the wrong number. We're going to fix that. It's 3.4, the table.
Okay, all right. Are we making edits to that at this, at this time?
Yes.
Okay. Just a couple of things. The, there was, pardon me, page two, there was item number G, two of the PDF, I think it's also labeled two at the, at the bottom. Item G, there's a statement that says coastal high hazard category, which requires preliminary site plan slash plat approval. Is that plat approval or preliminary plat approval?
Preliminary site plan and plat approval, both.
So it has to have a recorded plat?
Any project, look at it. That means that every, any project that require preliminary site plan or plat approval
Yeah.
is subject to a special approval and has to be subject to rezon and GDP plan and is subject to the special approval.
Yeah, I'm not asking.
But we are not changing anything of.
No, I, I think the clarification, that's supposed to say preliminary plat, not plat approval.
I don't know, because preliminary plats are optional. You only require final plat.
I know it's not plat approval, because you can't get plat approval unless you have a FSP.
Lisa Barrett with staff, can you clarify the question again?
On, on G, it says plat approval.
Mm-hmm.
So you're saying that you have to have a plat approved and recorded?
No, no, that, if you're, if you have a subdivision which requires preliminary plat, then final plat.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Then it requires special approval.
You need to put the word preliminary in front of plat.
Well, sometimes a minor subdivision requires preliminary plat, a major subdivision, and then there's a final plat. So there's different plats. But that, that language is existing in the code now.
Yeah, but it, you should.
To clarify?
Yeah, you still should have the word preliminary plat, because it's not a plat, it's not a final plat, it's a preliminary plat. Regardless of the subdivision, you're still going to have to have a preliminary plat.
No, not necessarily a minor subdivision, you go straight to final plat, not preliminary plat.
But can you get this approval with the final plat?
You would, if, if something triggered a rezone and that would, or trigger a plat, then you would have to get special approval. It depends what the, what the existing zoning is.
Plat approval is something that goes to the board, correct?
Correct, final plat, administratively.
But you said that this plat could reference preliminary plat or final plat?
Well, I guess there's different subdivision requirements for a major and minor subdivision. I guess what you're saying is special approval would be triggered if it was a preliminary plat that would have to go to the board.
Saying this doesn't apply for final plat, it only applies for preliminary plat.
That's correct, yes.
So that's why I'm saying preliminary plat is a specific application. So that's what we're talking about here, correct?
Correct. We can look at clarifying that in the future. It's been in the code
Yeah.
for quite some time.
I've got a code that's redlined and tabbed with mistakes.
Great. Thank you. We'll look at those.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, rather than I make any change at this point, if it's wrong, just leave it. We haven't advertised a change. We're going to be going through a whole new rewrite of the code and
Right.
all the special approval charts are going to be out the window and amended. And at that time, we'll probably repeal the whole thing.
And that's not a change proposed right now. But I understand you want to clarify.
Okay, I just thought it would be a good opportunity. Like, for instance, one more comment, just, just to mark it now. So when you do consider making those changes, page number three, item M, is a reference to chapter 17 of the Florida Administrative Code. I think that's, that's not, that's been replaced, I think about 15 years ago.
As Sarah mentioned, we are looking at coming back, revising special approval standards potentially within the comp plan and the land development code. So those clarifications will be corrected in the future.
All right, just reviewing this, that was one of the notes I made. Again, that's some time ago that was changed.
In the meantime, there is a catch-all sentence in introductory chapter that says we refer to the most recent edition of all these manuals. They change every year. We cite them, they're outdated.
Right. Okay, that's, if we're not doing that, then my other comments are moot. Any, Mr. Rutledge?
Being a graduate from USF, this seems very confusing to me.
You don't need to apologize.
I know, right. It's very confusing to me. And I think of myself as at least the common man. And so I, I struggle a bit. I know we're revising our codes, and I know that's a goal, and I know they're outdated immediately. But the challenge, this discussion, can you imagine what a small-minded person like myself is trying to understand even what you're talking about? And so I think the struggle for me is, how can I possibly give you good advice and be a good representative on what's the best solution for this, when, well, don't worry about it, we're going to do it later on Tuesday? It's just very frustrating to me, because I know, I know we have this goal to change all this stuff, and that's great. So should I vote for this? I mean, is that what staff's saying? This is, we should make this amendment because we're going to fix it later?
Well, the way I look at it, if that wasn't the intent, if we have a specific purpose for this process, then let's address that. If there's, there's a plan in place to correct these, I just, part of my personality and my profession is reviewing stuff for correctness and just have a tendency to do that regardless. Mr. Bauer?
So I'm on the, kind of the same page with Mr. Rutledge. So.
You want to take that off the record?
What I would love to hear from staff is, despite the other changes that we're recognizing through the chair's knowledge that are needed, why should we, as a board, recommend approval to send this up to the county commissioners when we know other things need to be done? Why is today's business important to do without cleaning this up in its entirety first? Does that make sense?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Bauer. Well, back last year, we did a rewrite of our land development code to kind of simplify and clean up some things. It's, it's a process. And this amendment before you today is to correct one or a few minor clarifications that staff noted. And sometimes it makes sense to take those individual subjects forward before the planning commission and board individually, instead of combining it with so many different regulations where then it gets bogged down and nothing gets approved. So this really is a minor clarification to allow recreational vehicle parks within the PDMU zoning district. It's currently already allowed in the planned development commercial zoning district, which, when you look at that zoning for PDMU, you then go and look back at the standards for PDC. So this is just merely a clarification of just that specific use within the use chart. We often take code corrections before the planning commission and the board that deal with just one particular subject. I'm not sure if that makes sense.
So to wrap my ears around this, this, this is, the intent of this revision is specific. There's already a plan in place and in the works to make the modifications to the code.
Yeah.
And to that matter, also, I think the, with regard to revising code, I think the, some of the greatest benefit comes from a large work group to have many, like, the users of these documents involved. And I presume that wasn't the case here. This was a staff-initiated.
Mr. Chair, if I may just intercede, and maybe Mr. Barnot will, I'll let him take first.
Okay, let me, let me try to clear this up. There are a lot of things in the land development code and the comprehensive plan that need to be updated, corrected, or put in sync with each other. Our land development code evolved over the years into a document that, in some cases, will contradict itself within the land development code. It'll also contradict the comprehensive plan, which is, we need to fix that. Now, we had an entire rewrite of the land development code done, presented it to the board and Board of County Commissioners. They felt it was too much to digest at one time. So if you'll recall, we had a work session over at the convention center with the planning commission and the board, and we went through the changes in the LDC line by line. And each board would tell us, as we went through that, okay, we're okay with changing this right now, but this other item, put it on phase two. So one of the things that I've asked Miss Barrett to do is, she's heading up a section now, that her sole responsibility is to get this land development code into a presentable fashion where it can be digested by both the planning commission and the board of county commissioners, where it makes sense, where, back to Commissioner Rutledge, the common person can understand this. So we also have to get the land development code and the comprehensive plan in sync quickly. And Lisa's identified most, if not all, those issues, and we're bringing them forward just as quickly as we can.
Thank you. Thank you. And sorry, I pulled this thread and I seem to be unraveling the sweater, but I understand what you're trying to do.
And if I could just add to that, just when we do find minor things that need to be cleaned up, it doesn't make sense to wait months and months to bring them forward. So that's why we want to do them individually in case there is a reason that, you know, it needs to be corrected sooner than later. It doesn't make sense to wait months and months. And just so you know, in October, we are. and months. And just so you know, um, in October, we are planning on bringing forward the urban corridor changes for the Land Development Code. And then also, we do have some countywide cleanups that through that process, we noted some changes that needed to be made. So those will be two ordinances that will come before you in October.
Thank you. And I guess, uh, we all have to acknowledge this takes a long time. It doesn't happen quickly, especially with, uh, something as complex as a Land Development Code or a Comprehensive Plan, so.
Yep.
Okay, um-
Just one more thing, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind?
Mr. Bauer.
So with, with these changes, the Chair has identified some of the things that need to be corrected. Will we then have another amendment to this come before us as a result? Or is it going to be more packaged together?
Mr. Chair, if I may, the, the countywide amendments Lisa referred to is a whole big packet like this with many amendments in it, and there's going to be more amendments after that.
Right, and as I understand it, we're doing it incrementally. The first is urban corridors?
Urban corridors and countywide amendments, but that will not include every, I mean, it's a, it is a process because some things are noted throughout the years. I mean, I've been here for 15 years and we still sometimes note some inconsistencies within the code or between the comp plan. Um, some of the things that Mr. Connerly pointed out in the special approval chart is a whole separate issue that we will bring forward you, hopefully, within the next year. But that needs to be looked at, both with the Comprehensive Plan and the Land Development Code.
So-
That issue does not affect what's before you today.
Right, so the, the, I mean, that, this is the way the code is today and the specific-
And it has been since 91, and we have been, we are able to interpret it, whether it's preliminary plat or final plat, we just need-
So we're going to see revisions to the code many, many times in the future?
You will, yes.
Yes, and then, um, uh, also, the, the, the ones that, um, we're going to see in the future are going to have, uh, much more participation, um, from users.
Yes, and you may be see some that are overall-
Yeah.
Or some that are brought to you individually similar to this one, so they can be dealt with subject by subject, if that makes sense.
Yeah, no, I, I understand. And, uh, I think, uh, earlier when we did the revisions to the, uh, Land Development Code, it was, um, presented as a, uh, revision of form, not function. The matter before us today is actually a revision of function. The items I brought up, again, are form, uh, the way the, the form of the code, so, um, I think that's probably the, the clearest way to dis- to state it. But, like I said, I've, I work in many municipalities and I've got codes, every one of them has tabs and highlighted areas and red lines in it, so.
Just want to note that I did not open this can of worms.
Sorry, Lisa, forgive me.
Deli noted.
Okay. Um, where are we in the process? What are we doing?
We're opening the public hearing, hearing to the public when you're ready.
All right. Okay, we're going to open the, uh, the Florida public comment. Is there anybody in the, uh, audience who wishes to come forward and, uh, add to the discussion? Uh, again, this is, uh, legislative, so you don't have to be sworn. So, okay, seeing no one, come forward. We're going to close public hearing. Um, Chair will entertain a motion or additional discussion.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Delesline.
Based upon the staff report, evidence presented and comments made at the public hearing and finding the request to be consistent with Manti County Comprehensive Plan and the requirements for text amendments in Section 341.2, the Land Development Code, I move to recommend adoption of Ordinance 16-31, amending the Manti County Land Development as recommended by staff.
We have a, uh, motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, Mr. Ron, second. Um, any discussion? Seeing none, uh, the Chair will call this matter to vote. All, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Chair votes aye. Motion passes six zero. And I believe that's the last item we have on the agenda, so we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Thank you.